Good evening. Welcome to the March 27, 2023 meeting of the Silver City Council. This time I'll call the meeting in order and we're going to jump right into our agenda tonight. First off with general orders, this presentation of the fiscal year 24.
Staff and Kristi Cluck is here to tell us about the budget.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kristi Cluck, Finance Director, and I am here to provide a presentation of the proposed fiscal year 24 budget as well as some discussion on challenges that the city is facing as well as some concessions that were made in order to bring a balanced budget to you tonight. I do want to point out that since the presentation is at a high level, in your packet is some detail at the departmental level. So these are our strategic priorities that have been adopted by the city council. Strategic priorities provide a roadmap and guidance to city staff as we identify the priorities that should be funded through the city's budget. The budget cycle is a year-round process as depicted in this illustration. The cycle doesn't stop once we adopt the budget. It continues throughout the year as we monitor the budget and evaluate whether or not any modifications need to be made. These modifications come to the council in the form of budget amendments. And you saw this just last week when the council approved amendments to sales and use tax revenues, our health insurance expenditures, and also some transfers between funds. We're currently coming to a close on phase one, which is the budget preparation phase, and moving on into phase two, which is council approval. Phase two will consist of a public hearing currently scheduled for April 17th, and then budget adoption currently scheduled for May 1st. And then finally, our fiscal year begins on July 1st. So I want to start with a look at our proposed fiscal year 24 revenues. Before I go any further, though, I do want to point out that on the next few slides, transfers between funds have been excluded. And that's really just so that we can focus on the organization as a whole and look at the monies coming into the organization and monies leaving the organization. So the fiscal year 24 total proposed revenue budget is $153.4 million. Overall, this is an increase of $15.9 million compared to the FY23 adopted budget. The major differences include, in the general fund, an increase of $600,000 in use tax and an increase of $1.5 million in sales tax. Of the $1.5 million increase in sales tax, remember that we have dedicated pieces of that, and so $375,000 is dedicated to the SUA and $375 is dedicated to transportation In the other governmental funds, we have an increase of $400,000, which is ad valorem tax that will be used to make the debt payment on our general obligation bond that is for the new fire station. And then in the airport funds, we have an increase of $1 million in fuel sales, which is offset by an increase in fuel purchases, which we'll see in a couple of slides. And then in the SUA, we have an increase of $9 million in electric sales revenue. About $1.5 million of that $9 million is related to the 3% CPI escalator that was made effective this past January 1st. And then the remaining $7.5 million relates to the production cost adjustment revenue, which we call the PCA. The PCA is passed on to our customers to offset higher purchase power costs billed to the SUA by the Grand River Dam Authority. Also in the SUA, we have a $2.1 million increase in energy payments from the Grand River Dam Authority, which are revenues that the SUA receives as we generate power at the Stillwater Energy Center. And I will remind you that that revenue source is offset by an increase in the purchase of natural gas to power the plant. And then finally, we have a $350,000 increase in water sales revenue and $200,000 increase in wastewater revenues. And this relates to the 3% CPI rate escalator that will be effective July 1st. So here, we're looking at the same revenue numbers that we saw on the previous slide, but this time it's by source of revenue rather than by fund type. Our electric revenues make up 45% of the total revenue budget. Sales and use tax is 27%. Water is 9%. Other revenues are 9%, and they include things like franchise taxes, licenses, permits, and fines and forfeitures. And then wastewater and waste management revenues are each at 5% of total revenue So moving on to expenditures by fund type, the fiscal year 24 total proposed expenditure budget is $133.8 million. Overall, this is an increase of $11.8 million compared to the fiscal year 23 adopted budget. The major differences over the fiscal year 23 adopted budget include $1.6 million increase in personnel, and that is spread across the general fund, airport funds, and the SUA funds. There's a $3 million increase in health insurance claims that's reflected in the other governmental funds. A $1 million increase in aviation fuel purchases that's reflected in the airport funds. And then in the SUA funds, a $2.5 million increase in natural gas for the Stillwater Energy Center, and again, that is to generate the power that's sold, and a $4 million increase in wholesale purchase power costs. Some other notable expenditures that are included in the proposed budget are the year two lease payment of $1.4 million for the public safety radio system, the year one general obligation bond payment of $880,000 for the new fire station, and then the year one lease payment of $300,000 for two new fire trucks that are anticipated to be delivered in June.
Do you mind if I ask some question?
Sure.
So the radio system you're talking about?
Yeah.
Is this the old system or the new one that has been approved and hasn't come to fruition yet?
That is correct. It is in the works. It's not fully operational at this time.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
So here we have the fiscal year 24 proposed expenditures shown by category this time instead of by fund type. Personnel is our largest part of our city's budget at 42% of total expenditures. Purchase power is at 24% of total expenditures. Other services and fees are 17%. Debt service at 10%. Materials and supplies are at 6%. And then our capital outlay is at 1%. The budget presented this evening ensures that the emergency reserve balances listed here in this slide remain in place. This slide shows the target for each reserve account as well as its current balance. We segregate our emergency reserves into separate funds and show these as internally designated in our financial reporting. And that is and it is to help us secure these dollars and help prevent unintentional spending. The electric, water, wastewater, and general fund reserves are not fully funded, and that's due to the council and the trustees having authorized a portion of these balances to be loaned to economic development initiatives.
So that $19.2 million that's footnoted has come from those balances?
Correct. Yes. Of that $19.2 million, currently $12 million has not been released to the borrowers. And it is likely that $5.7 million will be returned to the SUA reserves. These loans will be paid back over a 20-year period with interest at 1.75%. The city only started building the airport reserves in the last couple of years, so it is not fully funded at this time. And then finally, the waste management fund and self-insurance fund reserves are fully funded at $1 million each.
Okay, so I've got a question about that. Maybe this is a question for council. So if one of these funds starts to have a problem, we can transfer from one fund to another, is that correct?
Yes, with action by the council or trustees.
Correct.
So in order to bring a balanced budget to you tonight, staff has worked through several challenges and made several concessions. And I will point out that similar challenges and concessions were encountered during development of the fiscal year 23 budget and were shared with the council during the budget presentation at this time last year.
Kristi, before you get there, just high level, revenue by fund type is 153.4, expenditure by fund type is 133.8. Where the $20 million in profit is what that's showing?
Yes.
Can you just briefly explain where that's going?
So there is a lot of movement between funds, the transfers between funds. So that makes up a bulk of that difference. But on top of that, some of those revenues coming in are dedicated, so they are not available for general purposes. They're earmarked.
Yeah. So that's, I mean, I guess my question's really around more, I mean, just from the presentation, presenting it this way makes it look like there's $20 million in excess revenue.
Yes.
But it's really not.
There's really not, because, and I'll get into this a little bit, but almost 95% of what we carry in fund balance has some kind of restriction or dedication attached to it. So a lot of our revenues that we generate are restricted from the beginning.
Well, so did they go into that emergency reserve fund chart somewhere?
Currently not.
Okay. Okay. I just, I, yeah, it's a confusing number, right? Because it looks like we're saying we're going to make $20 million in revenue over excess over expenditures this coming fiscal year, but I know that's not true. Or it's not true in the sense that there's not $20 million more that we could say, well, let's spend that on streets.
There's not $20 million of discretionary spending, correct?
It would be helpful if we break that down and we are able to explain to folks moving forward where exactly that money is and where it's going.
Okay.
Because what you're saying is that it's not represented in any of the pies, the pieces of the pies that are on these charts right now.
That what's not represented?
That $20 million.
It is represented in the pie chart.
In the revenue?
Yes.
It's represented, but what it gets used for is not represented.
Is not represented. Correct. Yes. Yes. It gets very complicated in finding a simplistic way to explain that. I'm going to say I haven't found the best way to do that yet.
I'm happy with a complicated way to explain it. I just need a way to explain it.
Okay.
I mean, I guess my question, you know, the other part of that is, I mean, that's not just in the way you're doing math between, because we've got SUA and general fund lumped together in these expenditures.
In this case, yes.
Right? And so when you say that the transfers are being excluded, the fact that some of the SUA money is transferred over to general fund, is that in revenue in this budget number?
It is not in the revenue here.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's not in the expenditure from the SUA in that expenditure number?
Correct.
So, yeah, it would be helpful to have a breakdown of why that number, the revenue number, is so much higher than the expenditure.
That's a fair ask. Yep.
So part of that transportation, RSF, are those other dedicated funds?
Yes.
Well, that's $9 million. That's $13 million right off the bat. So, I mean, there really is a fairly uncomplicated.
Let us work on a roadmap. Can we do that?
Because, yeah, I would like to.
Yes.
And purchase power, right?
Let's go back and figure out what they are before we say. Because I mean, I know that looking at all of the other, right, you've got this emergency reserve fund chart, but that's not all of our reserve funds.
This is just what we earmark as emergency reserves?
Yes.
Yes.
But we have other money in other reserve funds.
We have other fund balance and other funds.
Yes.
Correct.
Yep.
Yes.
So when we talk about, and I know we'll get to this a little later, the available fund balances, that's not part of the emergency fund?
That's correct. Yeah, available fund balance is not going to include anything that has any sort of restriction or designation attached to it. And I'll explain that. Yeah.
I bring it up now just because you're getting ready to start talking about challenges and concessions and keeping O and M flat and no capital for the second budget year, and I'm kind of going, I mean, it looks like we got $20 million to spend. Where is it?
No, I get it. I get it.
We just need to be able to answer that.
Yes. Yes. Okay, so back to challenges and concessions. So in order to bring a balanced budget before you this evening, the department operating budgets were held at the same level as the fiscal year 23 adopted budget. No adjustments for inflation were made, and with inflation being at 8.6% in calendar year 2022, that is in essence a budget reduction for those departments. There's no general fund capital included in the budget for the second year in a row, and that's a general fund capital, so that does not include any capital projects paid from designated funding sources. So that's going to be our water and wastewater projects or projects from the transportation sales tax, things like that. Health insurance costs have continued to rise. Just last week, the council approved a $2 million budget amendment to increase our health insurance expenditures for fiscal year 23. And in fiscal year 24, that is being upped to $3 million. That's being increased to $3 million. No premium increases have been passed on to employees since fiscal year 16, and that has been an attempt to not harm the general employees, since general employees have not received a cost of living adjustment across the board. Phase two of the employee compensation review that was discussed with the council this time last year has not progressed, and that's just been due to the funding not being available. And that also includes continued review of the defined contribution retirement plan that the general employees are a part of.
We did implement some of the compensation, the benefits?
We reduced the vesting from 10 years to five years.
Okay.
Yeah. So we did make a step in that direction. We've experienced net negative growth in revenues. The automatic rate escalator for our utilities, which is intended to offset inflation, was reinstated at the start of fiscal year 23 after having been suspended from 2019 to 2022. However, it is estimated that our utility rates are still behind 13.5%, and that's due to the significant inflation that our country is seeing the last few years.
Okay, so behind what?
So that's looking at the last time that our rates were adjusted and calculating that change in inflation, that change in CPI. I will, I do want to point out that we have cost of service studies for our electric, water, and wastewater utilities underway at this time, and that's going to let us know where our rates should be. So it may or may not be 13.5%. That's just an estimate that staff has based on the information we have.
So this 13.5% is relative to a previous rate adjusted for inflation?
Yes.
Not relative to other utilities or other utility costs?
We have not done a comparison, or I have not done a comparison of other utilities.
Okay, thank you.
We're seeing increases in our sales and use tax, which is good and it's exciting, but that's very quickly being offset by the escalating prices of goods and services that we're also seeing. And then many of our fee structures across the city, they just simply haven't been reviewed or updated in many years. Finally, in recent years, and largely due to the pandemic, we've come to rely on what I am going to refer to as available fund balance. And that's been relied on to help us meet our budget balancing needs. Available fund balance is the residual funds from prior years that have no legal restriction or designation placed on them.
Is there a, like, a best practices for how much a city, a municipality should have in their fund balance?
Yes, and that's where our emergency reserves came in. So several years ago, we went through some processes to establish those targets, and that was based on best practice.
I would suggest that our target for available fund balance should be zero, because we should be spending all the money that we bring in on stuff we need to spend it on. And I think, I don't, I want to just quibble a little bit with your language about using this to balance budgets. I mean, we as a council, not you, Tim, you haven't been here, but we as a council have made choices to spend that money.
Yes.
To approve additional transportation projects, to approve additional projects because we have available fund balance.
Yes.
I mean, my, I feel like the way you're phrasing that, it sounds like we've had to dip into funds because we've had these additional expenses, but we've, those have been, in my opinion, choices we've made to say, we have available fund balance. And as I said, I mean, I think we shouldn't. You know, we certainly shouldn't have $25 million sitting out there in available fund balance when we have streets that are crumbling and when we have, you know, places around town that need money to be spent on them. And so I get what you're saying, and I like, I mean, it's certainly nice to have $25 million sitting in the bank that we really don't have any restriction on, and we can spend it however we want. But to me, our job as a council should be to take the money that we collect from our citizens in taxes and spend it on things that benefit our citizens. And so I don't see that as a, I mean, it does make it more difficult from our balance, from our budget perspective, because we don't have maybe as much play if things, you know, if we do want to come up with a new project, but that money has been spent on projects that we've identified as necessary and needed in our community.
Yes, and you are correct that there was intentional appropriation of those dollars for those one-time capital needs, and I will not argue with that fact. It was a very conscious decision after we went through our reserve exercise and set those targets. I will say, though, in these last few years, we have had to rely on that available fund balance to present a balanced operating budget. That is allowed for in state statute. We're not doing anything wrong by doing that. We can appropriate our fund balance to balance our budget, so there's nothing wrong with that. And all in.
I mean, because otherwise, we're using, we're balancing it with transfer from SUA fund balance, correct? To make the operating?
The operating budget of the general fund, yes.
Yeah.
But our, we are having to, and you'll see on the next slide, our fund balance is actually declining.
Our available fund?
Our available fund balance, yes, is declining even without those one-time capital expenditures that we saw over the course of three or four years.
Okay. But again, based on choices to spend money in the budget.
Based on choices, yes. And I'm not, those are choices that the council is able to make.
Understood.
So on our available fund balance, I think we probably had enough discussion on that. I think I'll just go to the next slide. So here is the spin-down of our available fund balance over the last several years. And what I want to bring to your attention is the projection into '24 and '25. Because you're right, there was intentional spin-down early on, and that was for some bridge projects, some street and drainage projects, some match-on airport projects. We did some equipment replacement, and that is true. This is also how we were able to absorb $3.6 million of storm yuri costs and not pass those on to our electric customers. So this is where that came from. So the more recent years, we've become more reliant on this, as I said, to fill those budget gaps and to be able to balance our budget on things that are more recurring in nature. And those types of things are our health insurance expenditures. There's been some employee raises for some certain groups of employees. Another example is we were getting into a refresh program with our police vehicles that was not sustainable.
Back up, I'm just asking a question. On that $3.6 million for storm yuri, that all came out of this available fund balance, and yet we still have an emergency fund balance that we could have, in theory, used some of that also, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we've got two savings accounts?
Yes.
One's a checking account, one's like a long-term savings for really emergency funds.
Yeah, the emergency reserves are intended for those extraordinary or catastrophic events, to be able to recover from that when we have some kind of disruption in our revenue stream.
Okay. Thanks.
So I guess, Kristi, the question I have is, how do you, how are you accounting between the difference between using SUA operating, using the SUA transfer, right? If we look at the general fund, you know, I mean, we transfer 17, 18 million, something like that, to make the operating fund hole, because otherwise we wouldn't get anything more than police and fire, basically.
Correct.
How are you allocating between that transfer to the general fund to make the budget and this transfer? When you say we're using the, this available fund balance to fill in the hole in the budget, how is that different than using the SUA transfer to fill in the hole?
It's the same thing.
Okay.
It's the same thing. This is essentially a drawdown of available fund balance in the SUA.
In the SUA?
Yeah.
Of excess available fund balance in the SUA?
Yes.
Okay. Understood.
Okay. Are there any other questions before I move on? That's good discussion. So kind of bottom line here is just the concern as we start projecting out that if nothing changes, if we don't increase our revenues, if we don't further decrease our spending, that there's not going to be that fund balance to be able to rely on when we go to prepare future budgets. Because I will say, the last two years to bring a balanced budget, we've relied on an average of $4 million each year to be able to bring that balanced budget to you.
I'm sorry. I just want to do the math right. $4 million of, $4 million from, you're saying, in excess of what? So if we're transferring all this money from the, we transferred 17 million from SUA, 13 million of that was from actual income that came to the SUA that year?
You can think of it that way, yes.
And 4 million was from money that we had saved from previous years?
Yes.
Okay. That makes sense to me.
Okay.
So every year, we've got an excess that comes into S U A. There's excess revenue in the S U A that comes in.
Yes.
And that new revenue, some of that is transferred over to pay for streets and bridges and all that kind of stuff.
Right.
And then sometimes we're also supplementing that with money that has been stored up in that fund from previous years.
Correct.
S U A excess revenue.
Correct.
Okay. And so you're saying we've been using more of the previous year's excess revenue?
Yes.
Than, gotcha.
And my concern is we won't be able to do that.
Understood.
In future years.
We'd only be able to use what's actually coming in, in S U A excess revenue that year.
Correct.
To be able to.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Any other questions or comments?
But I think just to, just since you have the chart up still, and maybe for Councilor Harden, and even maybe you. Kristi, I mean, back in FY18, we had an excessive amount of balance, which is where we were started talking about, like, are we keeping, are we managing that side of it well? Is that the appropriate amount of balance? Shouldn't we be using it to engage and activate it out into the community rather than having it sit in an account? So we started there, and now, and we developed some policies around what those, what, you know, maximum amounts of dollars held in those funds should be. And so that's where you can see some of those bigger drawdowns than that $4 million that you're seeing.
Yes.
In those earlier years on the chart that you're showing for those types of capital projects where we felt like this really should be benefiting the community, not sitting in an account somewhere.
Okay. Yes. And I am not questioning at all any past action of the council.
No, I don't think you are. I just, it's a, there are these different buckets of money, and it's difficult sometimes, especially when I talk to people in the community about, well, you know, are you spending money we don't have or whatever? And you sort of go, well, no, there's, this is how this all works. And I do, I mean, I do feel like we want this number to be relatively low. We don't want to be sitting on 25, 26 million dollars.
Right. And I would agree with that.
Because there's a lot of stuff we could spend that on.
Yes.
And so I think it's, you're right to be saying, okay, we've been spending this. We need to make sure that we're maintaining at a level that is reasonable moving forward and not just, you know, completely blow through all of it.
Yes.
I do think this chart's really helpful in understanding kind of what the overall trend has been year to year in our drawdown of that. I don't know that, I can't recall seeing that before, and that's been, that's really helpful.
But I do know, just thinking about my, my regular job, that sometimes we want to build up some fund balances because a strategy for future plans is indicating we're going to need those in two years.
Yes.
And if we've spent everything down, we don't have that fallback on when there's a bigger project to then pay for.
True, yes.
Well, and our community's facing all these other pressures and challenges right now with inflation. I mean, so even just the standard baseline is challenged right now.
So I want to talk about some of these challenges that we're experiencing internally because they are now getting the attention of our external credit rating agencies. So a credit rating agency evaluates and publishes an opinion of the credit quality of an entity's debt. Both the city and S U A currently have a double A minus credit rating, which is a very good rating. I want to assure you of that. It's a very good rating. However, the credit rating agencies come in and they complete periodic reviews. And so during that review, they can affirm the rating, they can upgrade the rating, or they can downgrade the rating. And these rating reviews are typically going to be published publicly. And it's to provide an indicator to the bondholders of our financial condition and our ability to repay the debt that they're holding. So S and P, Standard and Poor's, they conducted a review in the spring of 2022. And it was at that time that they changed their rating from double A minus with a stable outlook to double A minus with a negative outlook. In their February 2023 review, S and P affirmed the double A minus with a negative outlook. But then they documented several concerns over the decline in the fixed charge coverage ratio, or the FCC. The FCC is a ratio that S and P uses to measure how well an organization earnings can be used to meet its fixed charges. And so fixed charges are going to be things like our debt payments, insurance, general salaries. And then for us, a portion of our purchase power is factored into that. The specific concerns raised by S and P included the higher purchase power costs, the winter storm Yuri costs, the high transfers from the S U A to the city's general fund, and lack of base rate increases for our utility customers from 2019 to 2022. S and P is also very interested in how we proceed with the large capital improvements that the water utility is facing as that has the likelihood of negatively impacting our FCC ratio. And that's because we will be drawing down some of our designated fund balance to meet some of those obligations.
I'm real quick on this, just to make sure, and you may have said this, and I may have been right while you were talking. The current credit rating, the AA negative, is, is that based on the February 2023 review?
Yes, they didn't change the rating itself. They just changed the outlook in. Yeah. So it's just a negative outlook now instead of a stable outlook, which it had been for many years.
When is the last time our credit rating changed? Do you know?
We received a new rating. We hadn't been rated in many years, but we received a new rating with our 2016 revenue bonds, and that's when we received the double A minus. It was a stable outlook up until February of 2022.
Do you know how that compares to other communities in Oklahoma right now?
I think you'll find a mix. Yeah. I don't, I don't think we're, I think we're just kind of right there in the middle.
And I would agree, the AA negative rating is a very good rating.
It's a very good.
I work with this for the university as well, and I know how much effort goes into putting together a good presentation for the rating companies. And so I would compliment your staff and the city for, for keep maintaining our credit rating because it is so important as we're doing any type of project and we finance anything to be able to get the best credit, credit interest rates.
Yeah.
Thank you. So.
And that's really where this comes into play. You know, if we don't, if we're not able to stabilize that FCC ratio, then that's what it boils down to, is we are at risk for a downgrade in rating. And a downgrade results in higher borrowing costs on future debt.
Going back just to the double A minus, there are very few cities in the nation that have triple A ratings. That's the next one up.
Yeah.
We're pretty darn good.
Yep.
We can keep it.
So the cost of service studies that are currently underway will hopefully help with addressing S and P's concerns surrounding the increased costs that we've experienced, lack of base rate increases, and to some extent, funding for the capital improvement projects that the water utility is facing. But it won't necessarily help with the level of transfers going from the S U A to the general fund. The city relies on annual transfers from the S U A to fund operations. And it, I mean, it always has, at least going back to the creation of the S U A trust. And honestly, it's one of the benefits of the city having a municipal trust and having public utilities. And you've already mentioned the general fund budget analysis worksheet that's in the packet, but that, just to remind everybody, that is where, that's the document you can look at to see to what extent the transfer funds services in the general fund. So transfer of surplus funds of the S U A to the city, it is allowed by the S U A trust indenture. However, by resolution of the trustees, the water and wastewater utilities do not participate in the transfer. All of the revenues generated by those two utilities stay within those utilities and are reinvested in those utility systems. So that leaves the electric and waste management utilities to fund that transfer. A $1 million annual transfer is built into the waste management rates, and then the remaining balance is funded through the electric rates. So on this slide is a look at the transfers from the S U A to the city's general fund since fiscal year 14. The yellow shading indicates the transfers needed to carry out the operations in the city's general fund, while the white is transfers specifically for capital needs. And you all already brought that up, that back in fiscal year 1920 and 21, there were some large intentional transfers for those one-time capital purposes. The concerns raised by our credit rating agencies center around the upward trend of the transfers, the volatility from year to year in the transfers, and no cap being placed on the transfers other than staff's definition of surplus revenues, because that's how it's defined in the trust indenture. We can transfer surplus revenues. The rating agencies want to ensure that sufficient reinvestment is made in the utilities' infrastructure so that the infrastructure is maintained at a level to ensure future revenue generation and that the infrastructure and assets of the S U A are not harmed by excess transfers to the general fund. The rating agencies also want to know that the utility has sufficient reserves in place should an extraordinary or catastrophic event take place. And I am happy to answer any other questions you have. Or we can move into the second half of the presentation where Melissa's going to talk about kind of our path forward.
One more question.
Mm-hmm.
So the double A minus rating you're talking about is for stillwater general obligation bonds, correct?
We, the city has a double A minus on the GO bonds, and then the S U A also has a double A minus on the revenue bonds.
On the revenue, okay. Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Are the remarks the same for each then? Is the S and P, is that?
No, because the, kind of the variables in the equation are different. When you look at the city and what the GO bond represents and how it's repaid versus the revenue bonds. It's different repayment mechanisms, and there's different variables that feed into it. I will say that we are also rated by Fitch, and we also have a double A minus with Fitch. But this year in their review, they expressed very similar concerns to what S and P brought up. They did not issue a report. They did a rating, no action, but verbally, they provided that same feedback.
Go ahead.
Just quick, one thing I'd like to point out is that last week in O M L's, or excuse me, O M A G's presentation, they indicated a best practice of 20% reserves. So at $153.4 million in total budget, with our target reserves, we're looking at 32 point, at the 49 million target reserves, looking at 32.2%. And at our current balance is actually 20.07% of that $153.4 million. So we still hit that mark.
Yeah, I mean, I think the message here is we've got to be looking ahead, right? Because the trends are not great for us right now, just in the sense that our costs continue to rise. We have not increased our rates. We have not increased, you know, the revenue that we bring in that funds a lot of this stuff. We have not increased those rates. We've been talking about rate studies and what needs to happen on revenue or on rates, and the utility side especially, for four years. And, you know, with pandemic, we kind of didn't want to deal with that, and we stopped the escalator for a while. We spent a lot of money on helping make sure that people's utility costs were not were not causing them problems. I mean, I don't, you didn't bring this number up specifically, but I've, I think we've seen this number before around how much in, when we stopped doing cutoffs on the electric utility side, we, you know, our collectibles on the electric utility side came up pretty high. And so we, again, we've chosen not to raise electric rates or other rates in ways that we probably, you know, we were looking at doing before the pandemic. And that's, you know, in a situation now where we're sort of looking at, our costs continue to rise. We have not passed those on. And we're going to have to figure out what that means for the community going forward. But, you know, we're not in a position right now where we're looking at, you know, not having the reserves we need or being in a bad financial position. Our credit rating is still very good, all that sort of thing. But we've got to be planning for what that looks like in the next couple of years. So I appreciate, I appreciate that. Kristi, before you go, in our packet, there is a financial plan document that has all the different fund, restricted funds.
Of the S U A?
Yes, it's got the water capital fund, the wastewater capital fund, the waste management fund, all those sorts of, which I think, going back to the question about where this extra revenue comes from, because that, if you look at the total combined numbers on that sheet, the beginning balance is 64 million, just under 65 million. The ending balance is 75 million. I assume that $10 million in fund balance increase in all of those restricted funds is part of what that $20 million
Yes, that is a part of it.
Because some of that money is going into these waste management funds and wastewater funds that we don't get to spend on anything other than wastewater, those sorts of things.
Correct.
And so that, seeing that increase from beginning to end balances is part of where that, what looks like excess revenue, but is really not excess revenue we can spend.
Right.
Okay. I would love to see more on that.
Okay.
In our, at some point here in the next week or so around, you know, hey, it looks like you're making $20 million more than you're spending. Why are you also saying that we don't have enough money and we have to raise rates and all that sort of thing?
All right. Fair ask, yes.
Thank you. Any further questions for Kristi at this point? All right, Melissa, you're up. We'll move to item five, excuse me, 2B presentation regarding the necessity for increased revenues, utility rates, and other fees from Melissa Reams.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Melissa Reams. I'm the deputy city manager and the chief financial officer for the city. Where do we go from here? We, Kristi did an excellent job of presenting what I call the near present, where we are today, where we will probably be in the next year. But I'm looking more to the future. And where are we going to be and how are we going to get there? The bullet points you see in front of you this evening are a systematic way for us to approach the issues that are in front of us and to develop a supporting framework and achieve the goals now and in the future. And one of those goals is to have a resilient community and a resilient organization. And I think this is totally doable for us. Okay. So for me, when I'm analyzing issues, I want to understand the environment and the pressures that are coming to bear as we start working the problem. One of them is inflation. I'm going to repeat again some of the points that Kristi Cluck made, but they're worth repeating because they are things that we have not encountered in 40 years. We probably have several generations that had no idea what inflation could look like and how quickly it can come upon us. We have seen rise. We have seen rise in interest rates. That is the cost of doing business, and the cost of doing business continues to rise. When have we ever seen more unfilled positions than we have applicants? I don't ever remember that. It was always the flip side. There were more applicants than there were jobs. But today, that is one of our realities. We have supply chain issues. It can be shortages in raw materials. It can be elongated delivery times. It can be a myriad of issues, but they have ground our processes, in some regards, to a halt, you know, because we are waiting. How long have we been waiting for the AMI meters? I don't think Dana's with me tonight.
Nope. Well, James, how long have we been waiting for the electric meters? Do you remember?
Electric side, I think they're supposed to be like this summer, and so that's going to be, what, a year and a half from when we've got the water meters?
Yeah, by the time we placed our order. So, just those supply chain issues. Another issue that I identified after the PowerPoint was published was bank failures. And we had two in, two in what, a week span? Two-week span?
Couple of days.
Couple of days, yeah. The last banking crisis, really designated banking crisis, ran from 2008 to 2013. So, again, this is, this is something that several of our colleagues, you know, our younger colleagues, have never experienced. And vendor autonomy, and I think we've talked about this with you before, vendors are now setting their own terms and conditions, and because of supply chain issues, the city is having to make some hard decisions. Do we accept their terms and conditions? And Mrs. Carnley can tell you how she's agonized over some of these decisions that we've had to make. And then, just the areas of impact, staffing, and I know that we have shared with you on numerous occasions, and you've been very empathetic to our situation, where it is difficult to hire quality people. Service acquisition, even if we can't hire the people, it's difficult for the contractors to hire the people. So, the contractors are spread thin, and it's not as seamless a process with them. Again, we talked about product acquisition and increased costs of all kinds. Another area that really impacts us, and in a lot of ways, it's out of our control, is what I refer to as unfunded mandates. And that is a downward pressure from the federal and state legislators onto the municipalities. If we can't fund it at the federal and state level, we can still legislate it and then push that dollar burden off to the municipalities. And then, I listed this one as public demands, but in retrospect, it probably should have been public needs, and in some regards, public wants. And I do believe that that is the charge of government, and especially of you as councilors and representatives of our citizenry. We need to assess needs, and we need to assess wants, and see how we can fund those. It's that balancing act, and I think you all, in the prior discussion, really hit the nail on the head. Where's that sweet spot of having enough reserves for a catastrophic event, and then for things that just bubble to the surface? You know, they just do. It can be, for James's neck of the woods, it can be these constant breaks in our water system. We have to address those. And so, where's that balance there? So, then, after we kind of understand our environment, I started looking at, if I can't, if I can't get a unique new revenue stream, I have to somehow influence the revenue streams that are available to me, and I started identifying those streams. Sales and use tax is the first one. It is, it is the major revenue stream for the general fund. And today, the general fund exists on two cents of undedicated sales tax. The other two cents is part of that transfer that Mrs. Cluck was talking about. We move a penny to the SUA, and we move a penny to Fund 260, which is our transportation fund. And those pennies for the next year are estimated to be, I thought I had written this down, Christie, 9.3 million?
Seven.
Yeah. So, there's, there's 18, almost $19 million of that discrepancy, or that overage between revenue and expenditure. The first penny of undedicated sales tax was passed in 1966 by the voters, when they adopted ordinance 1160, or 1160 authorized the election. And the second penny of undedicated sales tax was passed in 1972, and that was ordinance 432. The other two pennies, again, are dedicated per the ballot and the wishes of the voters. Right now, our local sales tax is four cents, local. That doesn't include the county or the state. And we fall in the top 25% of communities within the state of Oklahoma. The collection rates range from zero, which I can't even imagine how you don't have sales tax, but I guess there are communities that don't, up to 5.5%. And so, we're in the top 25%. Use tax is, it always follows the sales tax rate. It doesn't differentiate between dedicated and undedicated, so our use tax rate is 4%. How do we increase sales and use tax? Well, the obvious answer is, we put it on a ballot, and we take it to the voters. The less obvious answer is through economic development. And this council has been very forward-thinking in their economic development strategies and policies. And one of those that I would like to highlight this evening is the money that the city invested in the Rare Earth Project out on Airport Road. Brady and I were visiting with the staff from USA Rare Earth. We have a weekly update visit with them, and they are hoping that, once they get into their production cycle, that they are going to be able to draw more business to Oklahoma, and hopefully, predominantly to Stillwater. That will increase our taxable base, and we can raise our sales tax. Ad valorem tax, property tax. It is available to municipalities through a vote of the people to put themselves into an additional debt situation. So, that would be through a GO bond, or what I call a special millage. There is five mills for public safety that is available to us through a vote of the people. There's another way that we can get a bite of ad valorem, and that's through a tax increment financing district. And again, this council has been very forward-thinking in that. Utility rates. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. We do have many rate studies underway, and we hope to start bringing the results of those studies to you late May, early June. So, electric rates are being studied by our wonderful consultant, Lisa Vedder. Dave Yonkey and Nugent are doing water, wastewater, and rural water, because there are some differences there. They're also doing a rate study for us on the rural fire contracts. Currently, we charge $100, and that caps the amount that we can bill you for if we respond to a fire outside the corporate city limits to $2,000. We need to see if that's really covering our costs to serve. And then, storm water. If you remember back to when we were meeting over in the community center, and Meshak came, they're one of our consultants, they were looking at our storm water rates. And I think it's a kind of an interesting conundrum that we're in. The more development we get, the bigger the need for storm water. And right now, our storm water rate is a dollar per meter, and then it's very low for these businesses that have large concrete parking lots. I think it's $50 a month, or 55. It's not very much at all. So, we're going to bring storm water to you as well, because our need is growing, and we need to address all of these issues. Service fees, I think Mrs. Cluck referenced that. We can do the same cost-to-serve study on any of the charges and fees that we have here in the city government, and we need to start looking at it that way. Grants, loans, you know, grants, we've hired one person to help us with grants, in addition to a lobby firm in DC, and we are starting to see great traction on that. I think that was a wonderful addition, because we kept applying but not getting anywhere. And so, between the two, we've seen traction. We're seeing some progress, and hopefully, we're going to be in the mix to get some very meaningful dollars from that investment. Loans, there are loans, just like there are in the private sector, but we have to have a revenue stream to repay those loans. And that's part of what I think the rating agencies are looking at, is what is our ability to repay? So, if you look at the Energy Center, it was predicated on those capacity payments. And it really, from an accounting standpoint, was beautiful. We built capacity. We went out and sold bonds, and then we somehow, we got this capacity payments coming back to us that made the note payments. So, it was kind of a full circle, and it really didn't touch, in a lot of ways, it didn't interrupt any of the other things that were going on, any of the other operations of the electric utility. So, then we go to some more, even less traditional, what I think of as less traditional. I'm looking at leases, and think of the copy machine fleet that we have here in City Hall. It's leased. We pay an annual, you know, we pay a regular payment every month, plus we pay so much per click over a certain base amount. And leases are a great way to help regulate your cash flow. We need to start looking at leases for things that we normally have been paying cash for, and one of those is our fire apparatus and our police vehicles. They are, they are items that can get used up very, very quickly, especially the police vehicles, because that is a mobile office for that patrol officer. And so, if we can get into a good lease, and we get into a good refresh plan, then we're constantly turning that over. We're selling back assets that still have value, and we're getting those new assets brought in on a regular basis. We have an example of how this works, and that's with our waste management trucks. With every three years, we're flipping that fleet, and we're getting newer, better models in, and selling not lightly-used, but well-maintained vehicles to other communities that might not be able to afford a brand-new vehicle. So, we are looking at leases as a real potential to help us moderate our cash flow issues. Donations and private funding. We have seen so much of that here over the last couple of years. And some of the examples that came to my mind is the corner at Sixth and Western. That was a lovely donation from one of our citizens. The City Hall art pieces. I love looking at the Bronco Buster and the paintings that are out in the rotunda. Those were donations from a citizen. Block 34, enough said. We won't even talk about how lovely that one was. The public sculpture that's going to go at Sixth and Western, that was a donation from the Humanities Council, the local Humanities Council. We've had a couple of donations for police workout equipment, and that is utilized every day, and very thankful for that. And then, our favorite, the library, is coming to us with several grants and donations, but those are used for library books and programming at the library. Revenue notes and bonds. The thing about revenue notes, you've got to have a revenue source. And the thing that most people like is a tax that they can count on, so say, a sales tax or an ad valorem tax. They like those, because they, the lending agency, I'm sorry, likes those, because they can count on that revenue. There's less risk there. Public-private partnerships. Again, this, this community has been very forward-thinking in the use of those partnerships. SASSA, Visit Stillwater. I think, to some extent, the Chamber of Commerce, because they are our economic development partner. OSU, oh, the list goes on. Stillwater Medical Center. Those are all great partnerships, whether they, whether they involve dollars and cents, we still are partners. We're pulling together in the same direction for a common goal. And then, finally, one of the less favorite of possible funding sources is the sale or trade of some of our city assets. We do it every day. We will surplus items that have outlived their useful life, or we no longer need them, and we will sell them on a platform. I think the one we're using right now is called govdeals.com. Generally, those are assets that our citizens don't have a really good attachment to, but when we start looking at some of these other assets that we have that cost us and are very expensive to maintain, that's when we start hitting the heartstrings of people. And one of those is parks. We have much more parkland than we could ever hope to maintain, and we're not currently doing a good job of that. And so, one of the options would be to sell or trade those properties. These are all, nothing set in stone. These are all just suggestions and food for thought. So, then we go on to, what do staff, what does staff see as priorities in the coming months? And under the label of public health and safety, we know we need a new animal welfare building. And we have engaged an architect out of Tulsa, Brian Thomas, and he is also the architect for the school district. And he is working on a conceptual drawing, so that when we come to you, we will have good construction numbers, and we will have a good representation of what that building might look like. At some point, we will need another fire station, and I think it probably is a little premature to talk about Fire Station Number Five, when we haven't even turned the dirt on Fire Station Number Two, but we need to be thinking along those lines. The police vehicles and the fire apparatus, we've got to figure that one out. And then, parks and trails. Parks and trails, it feels like they are the redheaded stepchildren. They, it really does. And they're provided for, not only in our local ordinances, but in state statute. And so, that needs to become a priority for us as well. Economic development, Stillwater Regional Airport. We are on the cusp of building a brand-new terminal. And the architect, Connie McFarland, will be here with us at the study session in April, and she will be presenting to you her conceptual drawings. We need your input and your feedback. She has had community meetings, but we wanted you to get a good look at what is being proposed. Infrastructure, energy-efficient improvements. We can do better than what we're doing right now. And you heard a presentation from us back in January from JCI, Johnson Controls. We're planning on bringing this back to you in April. We wanted to do our due diligence. It's so easy to just say, yeah, we'll go get a loan, and we'll do all of these that they recommended to us. If I am going to stand up here in front of you and say, this is what I would recommend, I really wanted staff to have done their due diligence about where we get the money and how we fund these projects. I'm not at all disagreeing with the projects that were proposed, but I want to make sure that the funding is responsible and comes from the appropriate areas. And then, the utilities, and the biggest one is what I call the Call Lake Project. It's that in... It's that in, in raw water storage, it's the rehabilitation of the existing power plant or, uh, treatment plant. And then, it's the system that flows from Yost, Yost Road down to Eightieth and Coil. You know, it's all of those systems. So, lots to do there. And then workforce. And Counselor Hawkins referred to the, the step, the very bold step we took last year, um, where we reduced the vesting schedule from ten years to five years. But then, we also talked about, um, taking that as, and another step further with the retirement and maybe increasing the employer match if the employees put more money aside. Right now, that would be challenging for us. Um, the health insurance, Mrs. Kluck addressed the health insurance very effectively and we're, we're, as your staff, waiting on pins and needles to see what the brokers come back with. Not only that, but, but the whole issue with Blue Cross Blue Shield and SMC. Um, mental and emotional health for your staff, being able to have that work-family balance. And I've always, I'm a longtime government employee in different stages of government, um, and I've always valued the work-family balance that a government job afforded me because remember, I came out of public accounting. And right now, they're living in the office. They're, they're working night and day to get those tax returns done. Generally, we're able to come in and start our day, work hard and go home and leave it at home. And so, that is really important to the well-being of our staff and our community. Um, regular salary schedule review and adjustment. People are getting adjustments here, um, in our organization. We have several departments that have progressions. So, as you progress in your knowledge of that department and that particular book of business, you do get increases. But I think the, the review needs to happen on the base adjustment or the base salary and it needs to be periodic. And again, we, we did Phase One last year and I think that was about a million dollars in adjustments on, uh, people who were not part of the collected bargaining agreement. Um, but unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do that this year. Training, you know, when things get tight, what's the first thing we cut? Travel and training. And yet, training is so key to maintaining a well-tuned staff who is current on all the issues and using the most, um, effective methods available to them. So, then, trying to marry up, "I've got funding sources over here, I've got issues over here", how do I marry those two things together? And first off, I look at, I analyze the projects and I try to determine the best funding sources. A really current example was last week when, when you met with the, with staff. We were talking about the project over on Duncan Street, about the stormwater and how were we going to handle that? And were we, it, it made no sense to anybody to put down a brand-new road and not make sure that the underlying infrastructure was not as current as it could be. So, staff started thinking and Mrs. Kluck came to me and said, "Well, what about an OWRB loan?" Well, I don't think we'd looked at that. So, I passed that off to, to our grants manager, Shelley Crines, and she called down to OWRB. There is a possibility that that might be part of the funding stack as we start working through this stormwater project to get to the goal that we all know is probably the right answer. And it's making sure that the, the under, the infrastructure that's under the road is as new and quality as the roadbed itself. Um, the energy efficient, efficiency improvements that we talked about with JCI, as I started formulating my funding stack, there is some available cash in some of these restricted funds that Mrs. Kluck referred to. Um, we also have received a couple, well, we've received one grant that we're going to use for, or we're proposing to use for the building, uh, efficiency improvements. So, think caulking and windows and insulation, all of those good things. The OWRB loans, um, and then through a tax-exempt lease purchase, which has been a toe stub for us because our bond attorney is, is wanting to make sure that we do this in the most effective manner and in the most, uh, legal, correct manner. And so, that, that tax-exempt lease purchase allows you to leverage savings streams of revenue and convert that to cash or a loan to, to, um, underwrite the capital improvement. So, we're still considering that. Animal welfare and the airport, the animal welfare building will be a time project. That's how we will put that out there. And remember, TIME is an acronym for Together Investing in Municipal Excellence. And it's what we used with the Fire Station Number Two bond issue. The reason I have the airport here is we are still getting a lot of FAA grants for this new terminal, but this is a thirty-million-dollar project. And so, if you look at what our share is going to be on just a grant, um, it's ten percent. And then, with a terminal, FAA will not pay for what they consider to be the private spaces. So, if you look at administrative offices and storage facilities and those kinds of things, they're probably going to eliminate that and say that's on the sponsor. Um, OAC has also chimed in on this new terminal to the tune of a million dollars. So, the reason this one is labeled a time project is, for me, my recommendation at this point is that we try and bond from the public that match so that we can get that terminal going. Again, we're early on and I'm trying to get the timeline, uh, along with Mr. Johnson, Gary Johnson, trying to get that timeline, uh, solidified so we know exactly when the money, when we need what money where.
So, one quick question.
Yes, sir.
What's, what's OAC?
Uh, Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission.
Thank you.
So, that's, that's kind of the state branch of FAA.
Mm-hmm.
And then, the police vehicles and fire apparatus. You can see, we've got a variety of things here that we're going to blend to make sure that we get these assets as needed.
Melissa, have we talked or looked into the use of the Public Safety Ad Valorem District?
Yes, we're going to bring that in November as well when we bring the animal welfare building. Because Norman, didn't you think that was about one-point-five, two-million dollars?
Somewhere between one-five and two. And actually, we'll bring that to you way before November because that's when the vote would be. We'll bring you some information soon.
Do, do you know off the top of your head if, if that's, um, that's a city limits district, right? It's not a fire service district limit?
City limits.
Yeah, okay.
Parks and trails, uh, one of the things I think we can leverage that I'm not sure we've done in quite a while is citizen involvement. You know, part of the trail dedicated or adopted by a certain civic group and they take care of its, its cleanliness and its, um, trimming and that kind of thing. So, I, I think working with Barb and Stephanie from Community Resources, we could get some of those community volunteer groups going. Again, things that are, we have shied away from and rightfully so, but I think that we need to take another look at some of these things is user fees. Grants, of course, sales tax, sale and trade of city assets and donations. And this is all to preserve an asset that, once it's gone, it's gone. I don't know how we get it back. And then workforce, and that would come from, basically from sales tax, current or accumulated reserves. Because once we, once we give an increase, that is with us and it is cumulative in nature until that employee leaves us. So, we have to bear that in mind. It's not a one-time fix, it's with us constantly. So, as we work through, I've given you a lot of information this evening about big projects that I see on the horizon and some possible funding sources. But more and more, I feel like we need a framework, if you will, of policy so that we're not constantly having to second-guess ourselves or, "Oh, when did we deal with that last?" And first off would be to adopt some policies by resolution. We talked about the reserve policy, but I think Mrs. Kluck, me if I'm wrong, by resolution. We talked about it. We need to adopt that. And in that reserve policy, I feel like needs to be triggers for when we use those reserves. Uh, Counselor Harden brought up a very, uh, interesting observation. Could we have gone to what we considered our emergency reserves for stormy area? I think we could have made that argument very easily. But once we get it in here with a, when we're not under the gun and we can think through it clearly, we can set the, I think she and I both have example copies of what those would look like. Um, in a, probably in a couple of meetings, Dana Maddox is going to be here to talk to you about a red flag policy and it has nothing to do with the wind. But they are red flags as to credit, creditworthiness and identity protection, those kinds of things. I did not realize how important this was. Um, Tom Ryder with me, training our staff, and he was telling Dana that some of the fines he's been sent, seeing for violation of these red flag policies are six digits. So, that, that could be, that could hurt us. That really, really could. I would like for us to start working with our departments to be more specific as they're designing their budgets and, and more goal-oriented. And Mr. McNichols shared with me that this was tried years ago and I've seen it at the state level too. I'd get those reports and they were due by a certain date and I'm like, "Wow, I don't even know what, what this is, you know? What do you want from me?" We would not just throw them in the deep end. We would have to really sit down and, um, one-on-one with some, uh, with the department heads, show them exactly what we're thinking and how that ties into the overall strategic plan. And then, those are goals for the year that we know we want to achieve and when something bubbles to the surface, we have kind of a litmus test to analyze it against. Is it a goal? Is it something that we would maintain, but we, it, it just popped up and we have to address it? So, it's, it's giving us tools when we're developed, when we're not in crisis mode, so to speak. This would be iterative, this would take time. This is not going to be an immediate thing. Um, if you will, think back to how, uh, when I first got here, how we did budgeting and presented budgets to you as council and where we are today, it's light years. And, but it's been iterative and it's been us working through, um, different issues as they present themselves. Build a framework with KPIs. We have a start, but let's really hold ourselves to those KPIs and let's really hold ourselves to that framework. Um, one of the benefits to a, an agreement like the Johnson Controls Agreement is the projects get, we get in and get the projects done and then within that contract is language that holds our feet to maintaining those, to maintaining those improvements over their lifetime. Those are all things that we as government don't, don't do very well. And it's not just City of Stillwater. We need to mo, constantly be monitoring, reviewing and reporting on existing policy and procedure framework for effectiveness. One of the things, uh, comments that I remember Mayor from your, one of the debates you were in with your opponent was how do we keep, uh, government current? How do we keep government current? We have to review, we have to monitor and we have to say, "Is this still meeting our needs? Is it still achieving the goals that we set out to do?" Um, Mrs. Carnley and I have talked about this several times, about how we would approach this. And then, we need, there will be exceptions. And if we can think of those exceptions beforehand, beforehand, then again, we have a benchmark to measure ourselves against and not just make an exception for everything that comes It sounds like a lot, doesn't it? But we have to pick a corner and we have to start, as Quinn Studer would tell us. And I'm happy to answer any questions or just have really good discussion. That's what tonight is all about.
Okay, you've kind of hit the nail on the head in your last statement. There's a lot here.
There is.
We really need to find probably some direction from staff, where to start. What do we, short-term, what's long-term? Where do we go? How can we do this? And I always think of project planning as, what's it going to look like? What's it going to look like when we get there and how do we know we accomplished it?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
So, I'd really like to have some direction on, of all these things. Pick three or four that are reasonably attainable and let's get started.
Yeah. The corner that I think I would recommend to you this evening is with the energy-efficient improvements. Um, I think we set an expectation with our citizens that we were going to, um, enter into that agreement with Johnson Controls. And we still can, we can still enter into that agreement. It's, it's, is financing this thirteen-point-four-five million over twenty years at, I forget what the interest rate was, four-point-one percent. Is that what we really want? Is that how we want to fund it? Because entering into the performance agreement, based on the information that I have, is not necessarily tied to where you find the funding. Now, what we have to work out is the draw schedule because this is like any kind of construction project. They have draws set out in a draw schedule and we would have to meet those. But that's the corner that I would pick. I think we're a good ways into that project and I think we can, um, I think we can realistically get there.
So, my comment was really not to put you on the spot to say, "Tonight, what we're going to do," but-
No.
Some thoughtful input to us-
Absolutely.
-as a plan of where we're going.
Absolutely. And what I can do is go back through the projects I mentioned. Did, did you see any that I missed? Other than day-to-day, you know, keep it, keeping the things running, are there other big projects on the horizon that you see?
Silence.
Mayor, if I may, there, there are things that we will be bringing to you in the next few months that, uh, will address some of the issues particularly pertaining to the budget. One is, uh, are those rate studies that-
Yep.
...will be coming. With the understanding that depending on the, where those fall, that may not be possible in one bite. It may be something that has to be phased. The other thing that, uh, I'm encouraging staff to bring to, uh, council are two issues that would be for the November ballot. One is the Public Safety District and the other is animal welfare. Um, that building just can't stay as it is and, uh, we certainly need to improve, uh, the facility for not, not only the animals but for our employees.
Yeah, I think that's, um, be, be interested to talk about all of that. Um, I think the rate study issue and, and looking at, at long-term revenue for the community is, is important. Melissa, do you have, um, numbers on sales tax, uh, collections over the last, I, I don't, I know I got it in email, I just tried to pull it up over sitting here.
I, I, I do. I, I'll be honest with you, I've looked at a lot of numbers, so I can't really remember. We are, we are up.
Yeah.
Or we wouldn't have made the adjustments that we did last week.
Sure. I just, I'm, you know, being up this fiscal year is tough to gauge, right? Because we're talking about, we've, we've had a, a rate increase, right?
Right, exactly.
And so, are we up with just the rate increase? Are we up, you know, at the base level we were at the last few years? And then, are we up, you know, compared to, how, how are we up compared to inflation?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I, I think, you know, your comments about, uh, economic development are important and that's one of the things we, we have focused on to say, you know, the, the best way for us to grow our revenue is for us to increase the, the sales tax collection in the city by creating more opportunities for people to be here, more places for them to spend money, um, generate more funds from people who don't live here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, you know, we need to be able to, 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 to start measuring, right? I mean, we've kind of, we started that, those projects a couple of years ago. We're really just now kind of getting to where some of those are going to be coming online in the next- online in the next few years, the next few months, some of them. And we need to be able to make good, I think, evaluation of whether those investments are in fact paying dividends in the, really the only way that matters around here, which is sales tax collection.
Yeah.
And so I, I would like for you all to put together some frameworks around how we can evaluate, you know, as things like the Conference Center and Rare Earth and, you know, Block 34 is not really a, a TIF project, but, but these kinds of things that are, are creating, you know, what are they doing to help create new sales tax revenue in our community? Because, you know, as much as I believe they will and they are going to, I'm also going to be the first one that stands up and says, hey, if these investments aren't paying those dividends, then we would want to evaluate those, you know, how we're making those investments moving forward. So I, I would like to see that, that sales tax framework and that evaluation framework for what we see in growth and how we can try to figure out if these investments in particular are, are spurring that growth.
Absolutely.
Well, the cost-of-service studies that we're doing also include, they'll include a rate study along with the cost of, the different analysis.
Yeah, it's a different analysis, but they do go hand-in-hand because we are public power and are a cost-to-serve community. We don't want to charge more or less than what we are allowed to under the law. And so that's what they're working on right now. So if your question is going to come from, from our consultant here pretty quick, how much do we want her to factor into the rate for the transfer? Because we need to be able, and, and when we talk about surplus revenue, I think the way those rates were designed, that transfer was in there. So it really is a component piece of, of the functionality of the electric utility. Water, we want to get to more of a cost-to-serve basis. It's much more transparent to our ratepayers because that cost-to-serve really differentiates between fixed costs and variable costs. They can control the variable costs, and that's the beauty of AMI. We've given them real-time figures to control their water usage and, and soon to be their electric usage. The fixed costs, they're fixed, you know, and they shouldn't, they change over time, but it shouldn't be that volatility. And that's why with these rate studies, I think, and Mrs. Kluck, you can jump in here, but I think they normally project out five years. We have talked about getting a 10-year rate study, but I think five years. And, and then midway through at year three, we come in and evaluate, are our actuals really doing, are we really collecting what we thought we were going to collect? Same with Stormy. You know, we, we are collecting back in a PCA the cost to our ratepayers for half of that amount of money. And we're tracking it, and we're looking at, are we actually going to collect back enough in the 36-month period that we said we would? The bigger, the biggest kicker in that whole deal, for me anyway, is bad debts. You know, if we assess that PCA, but then we send that off to collections and we never collect it. So we're, we're watching that, and we're monitoring that to make sure that that is all working. Stormwater, you know, that one, they did their study. We have charts we will show you. It, it, compared to the others, and I, I'd never really viewed Stormwater as a utility, but it really kind of is. And we will be looking at what those changes look like. In comparison, they're probably going to be smaller in nature. But every, every 25 cents helps get us down the road. So we, yes, to answer your question, yes, I think we'll be looking at both pieces.
Yeah.
Thank you, Melissa.
I hope that was...
It was wide-ranging.
Yes, it was wide-ranging, but I also hope it was encouraging. We can do this. We are a resilient community. We have smart people here in town, and we can figure out how to set our ship into the future and be that resilient community and be prepared for whatever comes our way.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. That takes us to item three on our agenda for tonight, which is our ordinances on second reading, or ordinance on second reading. That's ordinance number 3521. And ordinance, amending ordinance number 3494, approving a minor amendment to the 2022 amended Stillwater Reinvestment Plan, Stillwater Downtown Campus Link Project Plan pursuant to the Oklahoma Local Development Act, approving a minor budget amendment without increasing the budget of project costs for Increment District Number Three, clarifying the methods by which the capital payment obligations to the Stillwater Public Schools may be satisfied, allocating a portion of the increment generated by the increase in real and personal property values in Increment District Number Five, up to 1.128,600, excuse me, up to $1,128,600 to the affected taxing jurisdictions, increasing the budget costs, the budget of projected costs for the Increment District Number Five by 5% to provide a source of funds for implementation and administrative costs incurred by the Stillwater Economic Development Authority, providing for severability and declaring an emergency. Counselors, your motion on the ordinance.
Mayor?
Mayor, if I can? Oh, go ahead, Kimberly.
Just want to administer a matter, and it's properly noted for second read. The last page of the ordinance lists first reading date, March 27th. First reading date was March 6th. It was advanced to second read. Today is the second read date, just as a point of clarification.
Thank you. Brady, do you have comments?
Yes, I do. I just wanted to, to remind you, at last, at last week's meeting, as you'll recall, Special Counsel for the Center of Economic Development Law recommended that we continue the second reading to tonight. It was tabled by you all to tonight. And for the, it was for these two clarifications that we wanted to revise the language related to the budget. And so I just want to highlight those for the record because we did that on the first read, and so I want to add those. So first, it relates to the Stillwater Public Schools with their approval. The capital payment obligations may be satisfied in the form of cash payments, transfers of real property, transfers of personal property, services, and other items of equivalent value or any combination thereof. And the second item, it relates to the budget balances. Any funds not dispersed as public infrastructure, facilities, and improvements under that category or the public school facilities category may be allocated to the assistance and development financing and/or the new business development financing categories. So it's just some clarity in language so we don't have to bring this back to you for the full cycle again.
Thank you, Brady.
Yep.
Counselors, any questions or action on the ordinance?
Motion to adopt ordinance number 3521.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Please vote. The ordinance is adopted with a vote of four to zero. I think we also need a motion on the emergency clause. Is there a motion to declare emergency?
Motion to declare an emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to declare the emergency related to ordinance 3521. Please vote. That passes also with a vote of four to zero. Any announcements or reports from the officers of the board? Seeing nothing further, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council. Please vote. The vote of four to zero, we're now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for the evening.